Hey, what is up everyone? Today we're doing something a little bit different. Uh, I want to do this as um something to help me learn in the language. Uh, on top of that, I also wanna use this as something I can like put on in the back and wanna go to sleep. Uh, so it'll help me learn a bit, a bit quicker, a bit easier. Uh, they say that when you play something at night, um, you're taking it in, you're learning it. So I am doing a Japanese for dummies video. Now, it's a little study session. Uh, I'm going to be saying the words. Um, I'm gonna be saying them a couple of times, once in the Japanese phrasing and once in the English phrasing. Um, don't slay me for getting them wrong. This is my first time-ish. I've been learning, trying to learn for a little while, but this is, this is something to show that I'm a bit dedicated to actually learning the language for once. I'm gonna say I'm doing something, I'm actually going to do it. So, uh, here we go. We also have, in preparation for this, we have ramen. We have our panda cup. I'm gonna pour some of that and get it ready. I pre-poured this just in case people do actually wanna, wanna watch this video while they are asleep. So that the language kicks in, they don't hear the massive pop. If you know ramen, then you have to pop the uh thingamajiggy down, the uh, the marble down. Uh, and on top of that, if we get peckish, we also have some chocolate pie, cuz this is lovely. Anyway, so yeah, I hope we uh enjoy, uh, and... The light here is surprisingly really good. Oh dear. Everyone's having a great evening. Oh, we also have our support animal. Detective Bamboo. Uh, Detective Bamboo I've had for quite a few years now, rocking a snazzy pair of snippers there. Um, they are our support animal. Doing a cracking job. So, out further ado, let's get ourselves comfortable and start rocking into some Japanese. So with us while we're here, we're clicking on this video to learn a little Japanese. Here we go. So, Japanese grammar is quite different from English grammar. Particularly when it comes to word order in sentences. Even if grammar was your most hated subject, you can't afford learning grammar if you want to speak Japanese like a native. Without grammar, you'll sound like a big two-year-old. Grunt. Uh, saying things like the Japanese counterparts of Brian Carr, me kiss Mary, or John in office. I mean, you can understand that's pretty bad already. That's what it is. Uh, you generally, generally put the verb at the end of a sentence and add the particle "o" after the direct object noun. So to mean to eat sushi, say sushi o tabaru, uh, where tabaru means to eat. For further insight into Japanese grammar, we'll head to chapter three, but we will get the, this is gonna be a good little hour study session. I hope that everyone's cool with that. Uh, do you feel, do you click where you wanna go and, you know? This is for us to just, everyone to relax, come here and just watch a nice pleasant video, you know? Just something to relax to. Uh, so easing into common expressions. What are the most common communicative situations? Introducing yourself, greeting, parting, thanking, apologizing. I can keep listing them, but I'd rather introduce you to some common expressions. I should also mention that I did not write this book. Um, I am literally just studying it. So I'm not claiming any copyright or um money or monetization or anything like that. It's literally just an opportunity to learn and it's still using sticky notes, which I have many of there. Um, this is just better. I like to, I can put this on the back when I sleep and if other people like to do that too, then pat off to them. Alright, so, uh, Hajimemashite. How do you do? Hajimemashite. How do you do? Yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Pleased to meet you. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu. Pleased to meet you. Hi. Hope I'm not slandering and slating this beautiful language. Ohayo gozaimasu. Good morning. Ohayo gozaimasu. Good morning. Ja mata. I'll see you again. Ja mata. I'll see you again. Arigatou gozaimasu. Thank you. Arigatou gozaimasu. Thank you. Sumimasen. I'm sorry. Sumimasen. I'm sorry. Now, counting on numbers. Numbers dominate everyday life. What time do you wake up? How many glasses of water do you drink a day? How many guests are you expecting? How much does buying groceries cost? We're gonna get to chapter five and chapter five apparently has everything in it. Good old chapter five, we will get there. Uh, counters, you ask? We didn't ask, but we're going to crack on with that. Uh, the Japanese use a short suffix-like element called a counter right after the number. Okay. The counter you use varies depending on the type of things you're counting or the kind of notions you're specifying. To start with, count the bare simple numbers from one to ten. So here we go. Ichinisanyonogoroku nanahachikyujuu. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ichinisanyonogoroku nanahachikyujuu. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Japanese also frequently use the Arabic numerals one, two, and so on, that you're used to seeing. You can read more about numbers in another chapter. We are gonna count, we are gonna crack through so many chapters in this. Uh, hopefully make a nice little series out of this and plenty of people come watch it cuz it's a lovely language and I think learning and upskilling yourself is super important and it's fascinating to do. Also, I hope you enjoy the fact that it's, it's coming from someone that's English. Refreshing. There you go, Detective Bamboo. Okay. Speaking Japanese around the house. You spend at least half of your time in your house every day sleeping. That's not really accurate for me, but I'm sure plenty of people do. Uh, cooking, eating, watching TV, and so on. Here are some terms to help you name the rooms in your house in Japanese. This is gonna be interesting. Uh... Dainingu. Dainingu. Dining room. Dainingu. Dining room. Furoba. Bath, bathing room. That's weird cuz I'm, I'm, I'd assume that that's the bathroom. In England, we have bathrooms. Um, or washrooms. I've, I've gotten used to calling them washrooms. Um, oh, so we got here. So, uh, furoba. Bathing room. Kitchen. The kitchen. 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 Ribingu. Living room. Ribingu. Living room. Shinshitsu. Bedroom. This is my shinshitsu bedroom. Uh, using Japanese in social scenarios. The way I get with this book is it's giving us a variety of different like options. And we're going to go through the, the actual breakdowns and it fully, every, everything in that subject in the chapters. This is just chapter one, Japanese in a nutshell. Uh, so, using Japanese in social scenarios. So if you're ever going to Japan, like myself fairly soon, uh, you're going to uh, you're going to find these invaluable. You're going to really want to know just a little bit of basic uh common phrases. Um, hopefully in this book, we will cover it. I'm sure we will. There's everything from like asking directions here to eating and buying food, so hopefully this book got you covered like it will be me. Fingers crossed. Uh, I can't stress enough that a language is just a tool for communication. Communication should be your ultimate goal for studying any language. You communicate with people not only for socialization and entertainment, but also for completely, completing daily tasks successfully with your family, friends, and colleagues. Now, like I said, this is quite important. This is one of the reasons I'm using a video instead of doing like the post-it notes. Because in the videos, you can hear your voice and when you're, I mean, when you're, when you're taught, when you're teaching other people, you're, you're improving as well. You're, they say that when you're teaching other people, um, something that you've just learned, you are improving yourself, you're improving what you've just learned because you're taking on what you, you're understanding what you're saying and you're telling that to somebody else. Um, so effectively, doing this is going to help me get better at studying the language. And it's hopefully going to help anyone that wants to watch this video and, you know, get better at the language. So, let's make some small talk. Uh, if you want to say something more than just hello when you see someone, make a point of knowing Japanese phrases that can help you initiate talk. Start with questions like the following. Dochira made desuka. Where are you heading to? Dochira made desuka. Uh, where are you heading to? Yi tenki deshne. It's nice today, isn't it? Ni, yi ten, tenki deshne. Yi tenke deshne. Yi tenki deshne. It's nice today, isn't it? Go kyoudai wa. Do you have any siblings? Go kyoudai wa. Do you have any siblings? Meiru areres wa. What's your email address? Meiru areres wa. What's your email address? Asking for directions. When you need to ask for directions to somewhere, name the place you want to go. Add the particle "wa" after it and say dokudeska. Uh, as in eiki wa dokudeska. Uh, where is the train station? Eiki wa dokudeska. Where is the train station? Uh, eating out and buying food. If you love eating Japanese foods, which, I mean, we've got chocolate pie and we've got ramen. Uh, you, you need to know how to place an order in a restaurant. Uh, if anyone's ever been to an authentic Japanese restaurant, let me know. I've been to one and it was incredible service. The food and everything was just amazing. They had the proper ramen in the bowl and the uh, the service with the shutter. Amazing, amazing, amazing. Uh, your server will ask you, go chu monwa. Go chu monwa. Your order. That's your opportunity to say, for example, sushi o onegaishimasu. Uh, which is sushi please. Sushi o onegaishimasu. Uh, sushi please. Who doesn't love shopping? If you're looking for something in particular, name it, add "wa" after it, and say arimasuka. Uh, as in su kafu wa arimasuka. Do you have a scarf? Su kafu wa arimasuka. Do you have a scarf? Definitely check the price though. You can do so by asking ikura desuka. How much? Ikura desuka. Uh, how much? Uh, exploring entertainment opportunities. Hanging out at home is fun, but if you do that seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, don't do that, by the way. Get out, do something healthy, go to the gym. Uh, I go running, go to the gym, go workout, uh, do martial arts. You just go out, do fun stuff, do fun stuff. Don't, 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 don't be a neat. Um, unless of course you find it hard to go outside, in which case, baby steps. Uh, it's gonna get boring. So why not head out and explore the entertainment opportunities your community has to offer? Hundred percent agree with that, especially in somewhere like Japan. There's probably tons of stuff today. Uh, I bet you'll find some of the following. Bijutsukan? Bijutsukan. Art museums. Bijutsukan. Art museums. Gekijou. Theaters for performing arts. Gekijou. Theaters for performing arts. Again, apologize if I say some of these words wrong. Um, I'm about as basic as everybody else that's never really stopped to... I mean, I'm still my baby steps. Don't judge me. You judging me? Hmm? 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 That's what I thought. Hakubutsukan. Museums. Hakubutsukan. Museums. Karaoke. Karaoke. That is fun. Karaoke, so much fun. Karaoke. Karaoke. Kurabu. Nightclub. Kurabu. Nightclub. Uh, doing business and communicating. So if anyone's going over to Japan for business and uh more professional, more formal situations, uh, some of these phrases in here could be quite useful to yourselves as well. Uh, so, do you want to work in Japan? Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm hopefully going to do that soon. Plans change and this is where we go in life. Uh, do you want to work in Japan or in a Japanese company in the United States? If the answer to either question in the United States um is yes, you need to have a bunch of business-related vocabulary under your belt. Of course, you're also going to need some pretty decent Japanese decorum. You're going to need to understand Japanese businessmen. Uh, they are, like everywhere, every culture is different. Um, so, after courting them. So, voisu meiru. Voicemail. Voise. Voisu meiru. Voicemail. Haitatsu. Haitatsu suru. To deliver. Haitatsu suru. To deliver. Kakunin suru. Kakunin suru. To confirm. Kakunin suru. To confirm. Kopi suru. To make copies. Kopi suru. To make copies. Kaigi. Meeting or a conference. So if you ever get asked to go into a kaigi, it's a meeting or a conference and don't you be missing that. Meiru. Email. Meiru. Email. Pasukan. Pasukan. Computer. Pasukan. Computer. So we're rocking Ramen now, we're rocking a Pasukan. Nice. Uh, enjoying sports, hobbies, recreation, and more. What better way to have a good time than by playing or watching your favorite sport or indulging in a favorite hobby? Uh, so if you like me, like kickboxing and fighting and running and gym-based stuff. Um, I mean, you might, it might be something a little bit more different, like bowling or going, I don't know, like yoga or something, you know, just something different. Uh, what's a better way to have a good time by playing or watching your favorite sport or indulging? Yeah, we talked about that. So, doukusho. Reading. So, what we're doing right now. Doukusho. Reading. Kirutingu. Quilting. Kirutingu. Quilting. Kyanpu. Camping. Kyanpu. Camping. I feel like some of these are very similar to English. Sewiru. Sewie? Sewie. Swimming. Sewie. Swimming. Suri. Fishing. Suri. Fishing. Tackling travel-related topics. And this is gonna be an interesting one when we, when we do get to that chapter. Uh, after you've been studying Japanese for a while and the travel bug bites you, you may feel like making the journey to Japan to really immerse yourself in the language and culture. From packing your bags to choosing accommodations and navigating emergencies, the next sections give you some time, some of the basic vocabulary you need when traveling in Japan. Preparing for a trip. The first trip, uh, first step in preparing for your trip is to decide where to go. Then, depending on your destination, you need, you'll need to get a passport and book a flight. Here are some Japanese terms to consider as getting ready to plan a trip. Actually, so refreshing. Chiketto. Ticket. Chiketto. Ticket. Hikoki. Hikoki. Airplane. Hikoki. Airplane. Hotelu. Hotel. Hotelu. Hotel. Passaportu. Passport. Passaportu. Passport. Su, sukisu. Oh, this is a bit tricky. Su, sukisu. Suitcase. Su, sukisu. Suitcase. That's a trickier one. Making sense of money. Uh, now, when you do go, obviously make sure that you cover yourself financially. You wanna be able to enjoy and go to all the really cool places, the thrift shops, the, the districts at night. You wanna be able to explore and engulf yourself in the environment, the atmosphere. I can't imagine it's going to be that cheap. Uh, so, you need money no matter where you travel. And if you're headed to a foreign destination, you need to be prepared. Ryogae suru. To exchange. Ryogae. Ryogae suru. Ryogae suru. To exchange. Your country's currency for that, of your destination country. Be sure to bring enough genkin, cash, uh, to the exchange counter. Genkin. Cash. Even at foreign ginko banks, uh, ginko bank, you may be able to use your ATM card to withdraw funds from your kozza account in the right currency. Kozza account. For more money-related words, we'll get to chapter fifteen and chapter fifteen is going to have everything we want for our travel needs, which is going to be absolutely essential. But yeah, as I say, this is just chapter one and chapter one is basically Japanese in a nutshell. We'll try and cover a couple of um, a couple of chapters before I end it. I'm trying to make this a good forty to, uh, forty minutes to an hour long, just so we can get a good, good duration out of it, you know? Have a bit of fun with this. Hopefully having fun anyway. Me and my terrible pronunciations and my English accent. Okay. Take, take the chiketetsu, uh, which is the subway. Chiketetsu. Uh, subway. Other, other common methods of transportation may include one or more of the following. Densha, which is a train. Densha. Train. Ferry. 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 Jitensha. Bicycle. Jitensha. Bicycle. Takushi. Taxi. Takushi. Taxi. Securing a place to stay. You have several options to choose from when choosing your accommodation in Japan. Bijinisu hotel. Business hotel. Bijinisu, uh, bijinisu hotel. Business hotel. Kankoru hotel. Tourist's hotel. Everything I'm going to be using, one or two of those. Kankoru hotel. Tourist's hotel. Kapusuru hotel. Kapusuru hotel, which is a capsule hotel. Uh, again, I really wanna try them and see what they're like. I bet they're going to be very different from the spacious environment I am, I'm used to. Uh... Uh, anyway. Uh, a ryokan, Japanese-style inn, one hundred percent. Absolutely dying to go to one of these. A ryokan, a Japanese-style inn. The way I see it is it's very traditional style. I really wanna go and stay in one of those. Get a uh yukata and really check out, I wanna, I wanna check out the festivals and just engulf myself in the environment, the atmosphere. Uh, yusu hoseteru. Youth hostel. Yusu hoseteru. Youth hostel. Taking actions during emergencies. Now, hopefully you never have to rely on these, but it is very important to know them. Uh, no one likes to think about experiencing an emergency. See, I'm not the only one, this person in this book. This person that wrote this book agrees with me, uh, emergency while traveling. But if you're in a foreign country, you're better off knowing what to do if an illness, injury, or an emergency pops up. Uh, memorize these phrases now and hope you don't need to use them later. I'm glad I said that cuz someone else said that too. Dareka. Someone help. Dareka. Dorobo. A thief. Dorobo. A thief. Kinda wanna just yell that at someone. That'd be, that would be funny. Don't, don't yell that at random people in the street. Don't do that. Don't be those people. Uh, kaji. Fire. Kaji. Fire. Tasukete. Help me. Taskete. That's what it is, yeah. Taskete. Tasukete. Help me. So that is chapter one. That is basically Japanese in a nutshell. So we're still gonna keep going. We're gonna do a little bit more. I just wanna, cuz we're at twenty-five minutes now, but I wanna get a little bit more in. So that when you, uh, if you do listen to this while you're sleeping, you want to learn the language and you want it to drill into your mind while you're sleeping, then hopefully, I hopefully will pick up my accent as well. God, that would be dreadful, wouldn't it? Uh, but yeah, hopefully, um, it's going to be very useful for you. The difference between a long vowel and a short vowel can make all the difference in the meaning of a Japanese word. For example, obasan, which is an aunt, um, uh, with a short vowel. But obasan with the long vowel means a grandmother. Do not call your grandmother your aunt. Call her, wait, we're talking about grandmothers now. We're calling her obasan, you know, not obasan. Uh, I'd imagine your grandmother would be quite flattered if she was called your aunt, but she's not your aunt, so honorifics and being a good person. Uh, cool, 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 cool. Uh, so, ah. Which is the obasan, which is aunt. If you're saying obasan, which is grandmother, obasan, which is aunt. Uh, seru, which is sell. Seru, which is sell. Uh, or seiru, which is sale. So you can see how seru, uh, which is sell, and seiru, which is sale, can be easily misconstrued as the same word. If you're not careful, you have to say seiru, you have to add a little extra on. Uh, then you've got ogson, which is uncle. Ogson, which is uncle. Or ogson, which is grandfather. Again, don't call your grandfather your uncle and vice versa. Don't, don't do that. You'll have a bad time. Uh, so, ogson is grandfather and ogson is uncle. Uh, then you've got tori, which is bird. Tori, which is bird. And tory, which is street. Tory. Street. Yeah, you don't wanna, there's, there's, there's something, uh, somewhere. Uh, then you've got yuki, which is snow. Uh, then you've got yuki, which is courage. Having a bit of courage. Yuki. Arerewa. Yuki. No, not snow. Arerewa. Yuki. We're getting there. We are getting there. Uh, so yuki is snow and yuki is courage. Uh, unlike in English, vowels can appear next to each other without being separated by a consonant in Japanese. You may be inclined to pronounce them as one vowel, but the Japanese actually pronounce each vowel so that the sequence is multiple syllables. Uh, chuh, 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 chuh. So, eio is blue. Eoi is blue, but just blue, not a, not the color blue. This is a little strange. Eio, blue color. Eoi, blue. Ye, house. Yu, to stay. Ue, up, above, or on. Ue, up, above, or on. Oe, nephew. Oe, nephew. The vowels i and u come out as downright whisper in normal or fast speech. When they fall between the consonant sounds ch, k, p, s, s, h, and t, or ts, um, or a word ends in this consonant vowel combination. Okay, then we've got some consonants here that are very different from English. So we have ringo, which is apple. Ringo, apple. Fuyu, winter. Fuyu, winter. Tsunami. Tsunami. That one's self-explanatory. Uh, rio, dormitory. Rio, dormitory. Like most other languages, Japanese has double consonants, which are pronounced as single consonants preceded by a brief pause. Check out the following examples and listen to the pronunciation. We know we have a track one that came with this book, but we're not reading no track one. Kipu, transportation ticket. Kipu, transportation ticket. Kite, postage stamp. Kite, postage stamp. Pardon me. Uh, keikon, marriage. Keikon, marriage. Masaju. Oh, masa. Masugu, straight. Masugu, straight. Bagu, bag. Bagu, bag. Bedo. Bed. Bedo. Bed. Which will be moved from soon. Moved from soon. Uh, sounding fluent. If you want to sound like a native Japanese speaker, you need to imitate the overall stress accent. Uh, the pitch and intonation, the rhythm and the speed of native Japanese. These almost musical aspects of the language make it a big difference and the following sections show you how to achieve them. So this is gonna help us become fluent speakers. Fingers crossed. So don't stress, that's the big thing. I think when you're actually in a situation where you have to talk to someone, sadly, I've had it in the past where I've had to speak to someone. Um, and I got nervous. Um, and I couldn't speak all the words and she was really friendly. Um, she was someone at my workplace, um, she came in, she was a lovely customer and she wanted to buy a SIM card. Um. Uh, I'm not gonna go too much further than that, but she wanted to speak to me in Japanese cuz I was saying I wanted, I was learning it and um. I couldn't, I couldn't do it, I couldn't do it. Uh, and then she even, she even said goodbye and then like she was like matane and I was like, yeah, take care. It was very awkward. So don't stress, try not to panic. Uh, people just wanna help you out and pe- people like. It's not too tricky to talk to people once you've got the knack of it. Um, I say that, took me a few years. Uh, English sentences sound like they're full of punches, one after another because English words have stressed syllables followed by unstressed syllables. But Japanese sentences sound very flat because Japanese words and phrases don't have any stressed syllables. So unless you're speaking very angry or excited, suppress your desire to stress syllables when you speak Japanese. So all in all, if you're having a conversation, stay chill. Um, although Japanese speakers don't stress their syllables, see the preceding section, they may raise or lower their pitch on a specific syllable in certain words. A raised pitch may sound like a stress, but it's not quite the same concept. If you think in terms of music, higher pitched notes aren't necessarily stressed more than low notes. But even though pitch differences don't change the emphasis in a word, these slight shifts can change the word's meaning. That however, also depends on what part of Japan you're in. For example, in eastern Japan, the word hashi. Said with high to low pitch means chopsticks, so hashi is chopsticks. But with low to high pitch, it means a bridge. Low to high pitch, hashi? Hashi? Uh, in western Japan, it's exactly the opposite. High to low pitch means a bridge and low to high pitch means chopsticks. So where you're going, if you say hashi, uh, and it's. In a different dialect to where you are, you're probably going to get a funny look trying to eat your food with a bridge. I can only imagine how that's going to go. That sounds quite fun. We should try that one day, but not actually try it, don't, don't do that, don't do that. Uh, how can you tell what, what anyone means? For one thing, the eastern dialect is standard because that's where Tokyo, the capital of Japan, is located. In any event, the context usually makes it clear. If you're in a restaurant and you ask for hashi, uh, you can safely assume that no matter how you pitch this word, the man, no one will bring you a bridge. Damn, and I really wanted to eat my food with a bridge. Uh, listen to such pairs, yeah, attractive nonsense. So hashi is chopsticks. Um, and again, depending on where you are, hashi is going to be a bridge. Then you've got ame. Or ame, rain. Versus ame, candy. Uh, so ame can mean candy and rain. Kami, god. Um, versus paper, kami can be paper. Ca, rock, paper, god. That's a fun game. Uh, similarly. Uh, a single phrase can be said or understood in different ways depending on the intonation. An overall pitch flow that applies to the entire phrase or sentence. Suppose someone said that math is the easiest subject in the world. I don't know who would say that, but okay, that's not the easiest. Uh, you can respond to this statement by saying sodeska. Which means, uh. Oh, I see, sodeska. Oh, I see. Uh, if you say it with a falling intonation, you're acknowledging this statement. If you say it with a falling, rising intonation, you're showing that you're showing your doubt or slight disagreement. Uh. Sodeska. Hopefully that's going down. Another interesting fact about pitch. The Japanese raise their overall pitch range when they speak to their superiors. So as people speak to a boss, client, customer or teacher, as if they, the speakers are chirping birds and to their friends. Assistants and family members in a more normal pitch range. This shift is almost notable, noticeable among women. Female workers raise their pitch. Greatly when they deal with business customers. They don't mean to scare their customer, they're just trying to be super polite. Uh, women also raise their pitch when they speak to young children, just to indicate a friendly attitude towards little ones. Uh, a Japanese woman's flattering higher pitch in these contexts. Has a totally different tone of voice from the high pitch that she uses when she raises her pitch of anger. Don't make people angry, I know this one pretty well. Uh, English sentences sound very smooth and connected, but Japanese sentences sound chopped up because each syllable is pronounced more clearly and separately. In Japanese than in English. You can sound like a native speaker by pronouncing each Japanese syllable separately. Okay, there's a bit about body language in here as well. Based on body language, that's straightening up a little bit. I can't see my blue eyes. Uh, gestures are very important for communication. Japanese probably use fewer gest- uh, gestures than Westerners. For example, they don't hug or kiss people in public, but they do have some unique gestures. If you know these gestures, meanings and functions and can use them as you interact with Japanese people, you'll seem like a part of the crowd. Try some of the following gestures yourself and see if native Japanese people in Japanese, in a Japanese grocery store, at a mall, at a party. Or anywhere else, observe them carefully. You'll definitely see some of these gestures. Banzai. When a bunch of people gather to celebrate something, they often stand up at the same time, raise both arms in the air. Uh, over their head simultaneously and shout banzai, which is hurrah, together three times, so. That's kind of like cheers, I'm assuming that sounds very much like cheers. Uh, bowing. Uh, for Japanese, bowing is an absolutely important and necessary everyday communication tool. You bow to thank someone, to apologize, to greet and even to say goodbye. By bowing, you express your politeness and respect for others. But if you don't have to bow very deeply. Uh, but you don't have to bow very deeply. In most cases, you can just tilt your head for a second or two, say the deep bow, using the upper half of your body. For these times when you make a horrible mistake, receive overwhelming kindness or associate with extremely formal people. Uh, nodding. Whenever someone says something to you, nod immediately. Otherwise, the speaker will think you're not paying attention or that you're upset. Don't make people upset. Uh, waving. If you want Japanese folks to understand your waves, you must know that Japanese waving is all in the wrist. If you greet your American neighbor by moving your hand up and down from your wrist, like a toddler waving bye-bye, he'll understand you mean hi. However, your Japanese neighbor will think you're beckoning her to come to you. No. No. Uh, Japanese use a sort of palm down scooping motion come, to say come here. Just a one eighty degree turn from the palm up scooping motion, Americans used to say the same thing. So. Be careful if you're going to wave to people in Japan. Uh, you don't want to scare people or give people the wrong idea. Don't do that. Uh, each syllable, uh, is represented by each kana character. Uh, so seeing Japanese scripts can help you pronounce words and sentences as well. Uh, for the scoop on the Japanese scripts, including kana, see a later related section, so we're going to find out more later. Keep your speed up. The shortcut to sounding like a Japanese native is to pay attention to your speech speed. Try to say the entire phrase or sentence in normal speed. If you speak too slowly, the listener may lose track of what you're trying to say, even if your pronunciation is precisely perfect. Uh, I'm not asking you to speak fast, but try to speak close to the normal speech speed of native speakers. I. Hmm, hmm. That'd be a chance to learn. Uh, chances are that no one will notice your minor pronunciation problems if you speak in normal speed with the right intonation and rhythm. Uh, introducing Japanese scripts. Japanese use multiple writing systems simultaneously even in the same sentence, combining two sets of phonetic symbols called kana. Hiragana and katakana, the Chinese characters called kanji. Each kana character represents a syllable sound. But each kanji character represents a meaning. This book provides kana and kanji. In most sections, you can get used to the authentic Japanese text, but don't worry, they also provide, this, this writer is amazing. Uh, cuz they've also provided romaji, which is the Roman letters, the, the English more, the English style more, um, the readable ones. Uh, throughout the book, so you never get lost or feel intimidated. It's really up to you whether you want to learn Japanese by using romaji, kana and kanji. Just gonna throw ourselves in, I wanna learn as much as I can, uh, baby steps, you're gonna wanna really take your time with it, but. You know, surround yourself with it as much as possible, hence why I'm doing these videos, you know, uh, this is an opportunity to, to learn. Uh, in modern Japanese, hiragana is mainly used for representing grammatical elements and native words not written in kanji. While katakana is used for representing foreign names and foreign vocabulary. The next section introduces you to some symbols and sounds. Uh, what they stand for, as well as some basic writing related rules, the characters. Table two to three, we're gonna, I get the table two to three, you're gonna have to miss out on that one, ish, I can probably show. Uh. Oh. So. Here we go. You probably can't see amazingly. Camera doesn't really wanna focus, does it? No. Okay. So. This is a bit about how they, the, the words, the pronunciations look in their hiragana and katakana print, um, counterparts. This is something I would probably have to do something with an actual book for, um, but in regards to pronunciations, we can cover those, that's not a problem. Uh, so ah, i, u, e, o, ka, ki, ku, ke, ko. Sa, shi, su, se, so, ta, chi, su, te, to. Na, ni, nu, ne, no, ha, hi, fu, he, ho. Ma, mi, mu, me, mo. Ya, you, yo, ra, ri, ru, re, ro, wa. O, hmm. What's your judgment mean? I see the judgment. Do we know? Do we know? Uh. That's a bit about that, we want to cover some pronunciations, okay. Uh. So. Let's just go back to a few more words here. So we've got bunpu, distribution. Bunpu or boonpu, distribution. Chiijimu, to shrink. Chiijimu, to shrink. Fubuki, snowstorm. Fubuki, snowstorm. Gaka, painter. Gaka, painter. Habba, width. Habba, width. Kampai, kampai, oh, kampai. Kampai, toast. Shiji, instruction. Suzu, bell. Suzu, bell, shiji, instruction. Suzuki, continuation. Suzuki, continuation. Okay, so that's what Suzuki stands for, well, if you put a T in front of it anyway. Uh. Hmm, you can represent complex syllables with a sound quality of i by adding a small sized ya. You or yo after a syllable with vowel i. I'm not talking about lowercase or uppercase, you just need to make the size of the character smaller by fifty to seventy-five percent. For example, ki, followed by the small sized. Kia, oh, it's yields, but the same applies, it's harder to do this without actually. Show you this one, the size is a bit different, let me, let me. There you go. Okay. Then we have hyaku, hundred. Hyaku, hundred. Shatsu. Shut. Shatsu, shut. Shujutsu, medical operation. Shujutsu, medical operation. Kite, postage stamp, we covered this one. Kite, postage stamp. Mitsu, three pieces. Mitsu, three pieces. Socksu. Socks. Sokusu. Sokusu, okay, sokusu, socks. Sokusu, socks. Long vowels are represented, yeah, I got that. Obasan, which is grandmother, ogisan, grandfather. Ko-fi, oh, ko-he. Coffee, ko-he, coffee. The pronunciation of some kana does change, uh, otosan, which is father, otosan. Uh, and sensei, which is teacher. Sensei, teacher. Or an upper class, you know, someone that's teaching you something and they're, they're a buddy. Uh, but they can also be senpai, depending on the situation. Uh, kanji. It's hard to show, kanji. Hitou, which is person. Hitou, person. Nihonjin, a Japanese person. Nihonjin, Japanese person. Sanin, three people. Sanin, three people. Pardon me. Uh, akuri, bright. Akuri, bright. Taberu, to eat. Taberu, to eat. Uh, this is, this is all gonna be a fun. Let's have a bit of time, I'll keep it playing just a bit longer. Uh, table two point four, fifty of the easiest relatively speaking, this, this is fifty of the easiest, most useful kanji characters. Uh, ichi, one. Uh, hitotsu, one piece. Hitotsu, one piece. Hitori, one person. So, one, ichi, hitotsu, one piece. Hitori, one person. Two, ni. Uh, which is number two, ni, two. Futatsu, two pieces. Futatsu, uh, two pieces. Three, son. Three, son. Mitsu, three pieces. Mitsu, three pieces. Person, hitou. Uh, person. Uh, hitou. Nihonjin. No, nihonjin. Japanese person. Mouth. Uh, kuchi, mouth. Kuchi. Jinkoru, population. Jinkoru, population. Ai. Me. Ai. Me. Hitotsumi, what, hitotsumi, hitotsume. Hitotsume, the first piece. Hitotsume, the first piece. Moku teki. Purpose, moku teki, purpose. Tree. Key. Tree. Key. Hmm. Channel your key, channel your trees. Hmm. Uh. Uh, forest, mori. Forest, mori. Shinwurin, woods and forest. Shinwurin, woods and forest. Mountain, yama. Mountain, yama. Fuji-san, Mount Fuji. Fuji-san, Mount Fuji. River, kawa. River, kawa. Kawaguchi. Uh, which is a family name, Kawaguchi. Sun, he. Sun, he. Nichiyobi. Nichiyobi, Sunday. Nichiyobi is Sunday, how about that? Moon, tsuki. Moon, tsuki, tsuki. That's the moon. Getsuyobi, getsuyobi, Monday. Getsuyobi, Monday. Nichiyobi, Sunday? Nichiobi, Sunday. Getsuyobi, Monday. Year or age, toshi. Year or age, toshi. Kyonen, last year. Kyonen, last year. Book, hon. Book, hon. Nihon, Nippon, Japan. Nihon, Nippon, Japan. Bright, akurai. Akurui, akurui, rui. Akarui. Bright, akarui, bright. Aso, tomorrow. Aso, tomorrow. To go, ike. Ikku. Ikku, to go. Ikku, to go. Ginko, bank. Ginko, bank. To come, kuru. To come, kuru. Raishu, uh, ra- raishu, next week. Raishu, next week. Ai, me, private. Watashi. Watashi, me. Uh, shiritsu daigaku, private university. Shiritsu daigaku, private university. Male, otoko no hito. A man. Otoko no hito, a man. Danse, man. Ariva, danse. Hmm. Hmm. Definitely liked it when I went with that though. Right, fifty-one. Uh. Mother, haha. Hmm. Or okasan. Someone else's mother, hmm. So if it's your own mother, you say haha. Or if it's somebody else's mother, you say okasan. Ah. Father, if you're referring to your own one, chichi. So one's own father, chichi. Uh, or somebody else's father, otosan. Otosan. Ka, kuruma. Ka, kuruma. Densha, train. Densha, densha. Train. Eat, taberu. Shokuji, meal. Shokuji, meal. Enter, hayuru. Hayuru. Enter, hayuru. Nyugaku, admission to a school. Nyugaku, admission to a school. Come out, daru. Come out, daru. Deguchi, exit. Deguchi, so if you see the deguchi, that's your way out. Shupu, shupatsu. Shupatsu, departure. Shupatsu, departure. Learn, manabu, to learn. Manabu, to learn. Gakusei, student. Gakusei, student. Gako, school. Gako, gako, school. Ahead or previous, sakinii, on ahead. Sakini, on ahead. Sensei, teacher. Sensei, teacher. Sengetsu, last month. Sengetsu, last month. Live birth, ikiru, to live. Ikiru, to live. Umareru, to be born. Umareru, to be born. Gold or money, keen, gold. Keen, gold. Okane, money. Okane, money. Kinyobi, Friday. Kinyobi, Friday. So we've got getsuyobi, Monday. Nichiobi, which is Sunday. Nice. Top or above, ue. Top or above, ue. Agaru, to go up. Agaru, to go up. Jousu, skillful. Jousu, skillful. Bottom or below, shita. Bottom or below, shita. Sagaru, to go down. Sagaru, to go down. Chika, basement. Chika, basement. If you're in an abandoned place, don't go to the chika. Can have a bad time. Uh, inside or middle, naka. Inside or middle, naka. Chu goku, china. Chu goku, china. Water, mizu. Water, mizu. Su yobi, wow, which is Wednesday. Su yobi, Wednesday. Soil, suchi. Soil, suchi. Tochi, land. Tochi, land. Do yobi, Saturday. Do yobi, Saturday. Fire, hi. Fire, hi. Kayobi, Tuesday. Kayobi, Tuesday. Uh, kazan, volcano. Kazan, volcano. Big, oki. Oh, okie, okie, big. Daigaku, university. Daigaku, university. My. Small, chi se. Chi se. Chi sae. Small. Uh, shogaku se, elementary school student. Shogaku se. Dog, inu. Dog, inu. Banken, watchdog. Banken, watchdog. Expensive or tall, takai, takai, take, take. Uh, expensive. Ko ko, ko ko, high school. Ko ko, high school. Cheap or peaceful, yasui. Cheap or peaceful, yasui. Anshin, peace of mind. Anshin is a good one. Uh, right, migi. Uh, setsu suru, to turn right. Hirari is left, with saiyu, left and right. Circle or yen, in. Uh, enshu, circumference. Long chief, nagai. Kocho, which is principal. Morning, asa. Chousoku, breakfast. Noon or daytime, hiru. Chushoku, lunch. Evening, ban. Konban, tonight. Hour, tokki. Jiikan, Easter time. Minute, wakaru, to understand. Go fun, go fun, five minutes. One. That is chapter two done. Chapters one and two, we smashed through the first two chapters. How about that? I hope you really enjoyed the, uh, the video. I had a lot of fun doing this. Um, yeah, I'm gonna make more videos and if you really like my accent, I'm also gonna be doing a few other different things like Macbeth. Um, I've got another bit by George Orwell that I'm gonna be doing. I've got literature classes coming up, so. Um, yeah, I just thought it was more of a fun, improve myself kind of thing. Uh, I hope you really enjoyed it. If you're gonna leave us on repeat like Ibrox at night so I can learn the words better or not pick up my already quite atrocious English accent, um, then, yeah. Hope you enjoyed it. Thank you. Uh, and enjoy my voice constantly on repeat, if you like my voice. Uh, remember to like and subscribe and leave a comment if you want me to do more videos. I will be finishing this book and we can do more books. Um, there's something a bit different from my workout videos and my funny pun videos and things like that, so, yeah. Uh, thank you for watching. Take care and enjoy the rest of your day. Always see me in the side.